Welcome. My name is Dave Alcox and I want to welcome you to Granite Town Media on Channel 21 here in the Board of Selectmen's Room at Town Hall. Tonight, we are going to have a great conversation with three candidates who are vying for the position of selectman in our town of Milford. The format is going to be quite simple. I'm going to have them introduce themselves. They'll give a quick opening statement of who they are and what some of their motives are for running. After that, I'm going to ask them to explain what is a selectman and what do they do in our town? To give you a little background on what the selectmen actually do. And then following that, we're going to have a roundtable discussion with a variety of questions relative to the ideas and issues that are surrounding the community of Milford. At the end, I'll have them do a closing statement and then I will thank you, the viewer, for watching and enduring this hour-long discussion that we're going to have and we hope to see you at the polls. So without any further ado, let us get ourselves to the why we're here and the people that were here. In this format, I'd like to start at the end with Mr. Labonte. Chris, would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Dave. My name is Chris Labonte. I am a Milford resident for over forty-five years. I am self-employed. I have been employed in my own ground maintenance company for the last twenty-five years. Currently, the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Past committees that I've been on is School Budget Advisory Committee, Town Budget Advisory Committee, CIP, Granite Town Media, Heritage Commission, Joint Loss, Manifest Sign-Off, which is going through all of the receipts and everything that the town spends money on. So I get to see all the good stuff there. I pride myself on attendance and preparedness. I feel I'm not afraid to ask hard questions. I believe that doing what's best for the community and the taxpayers has always been my priority. I believe in building trust through transparency.
Awesome. And our next candidate?
Good evening. My name is Tim Finan. I am a twenty-eight-year resident of Milford. Over these twenty-eight years, I've been on a variety of committees. I was a former selectman for two terms back from two thousand seven through thirteen. I'm currently on the Planning Board and Granite Town Media Advisory Committee, GOGTM. In the past, I've been on the Recreation Commission, the Budget Advisory Committee, Capital Improvements Plan Committee. I'm sure I'm missing several of them, but I've been on many committees in town. And I just, you know, my wife Gerald and I, we raised four kids here in town. And they're all grown and out of the house now, so now I've got more time. So it's a good time for me to come back. I'm also very involved in other community, an active member of Milford Rotary and some other foundations in town. But this was a good time. I have some free time freed up last year. So I wanted to step up and give it another try. Think I can help out.
Fantastic. And David?
How are you? I'm Dave Cottonzano. I'm fairly new here compared to the two gentlemen sitting next to me. About three years here in Milford. Prior to this, lived in Merrimack, New Hampshire for about twenty years, very involved in the community over there. A lot of volunteer work, making sure that I heard attendance and showing up, super important for us to attend meetings, show up and be involved in our community. So that's where, you know, my mind's at. And, you know, my goal is to help wherever is needed. I have a heavy background in budgeting and finance and can use my skills to help, you know, oversee budgets, negotiate contracts back and forth and just be an awesome member of the community. So look forward to chatting with these two.
Fantastic. So quite often, a lot of people are unfamiliar with the form of local government on the local level. And I'm hoping that Chris and Tim, if you could just maybe explain what a selectman is, how many years of the term, and how many positions there are in our town and how many positions are open right now?
If you take it. Sure. The Board of Selectmen's made up of five members of the community. It is our job, if you want to say, to not do day-to-day operations. We have a town administrator that actually runs the town day-to-day operations. The Board of Selectmen would be more in charge of budgeting aspects, creating the budget along with the help of the town administrator, department heads. We would go through, do different appropriations at times as far as, on levels that, if you have issues that come up during the year, which may be above a certain threshold of what a department head or a town administrator could do. We also have a responsibility, each member of the board has what they call subcommittees. Some of them would be like Granite Town Media, Heritage Commission. Almost every committee I think we have in town has a selectman's representative. Sometimes you're a voting member, sometimes you're not a voting member. If you've got anything you want to add?
So Tim, let me ask you this. Why would somebody want to come to a selectman's meeting? Like what would be the motivation behind that?
Well, that's a great question. It's actually, one of the great things, great things, one of the benefits of what we've all been through the last two years is with Zoom and all this, all of a sudden, when I was on the board before, you know, ten years ago, you were lucky to have three people in the crowd. I mean, nobody came to these meetings at all. And now with Zoom, I don't know how many people are on right now, but there's been Board of Selectmen meetings where there's, you know, thirty, forty people at a meeting, which is great. And the reason you'd want to come is because this is where all the decisions are made. Some of them are, you know, pretty mind-numbingly dull. But, you know, the important decisions about, you know, accepting donations, you know, if any donations come in over a certain amount of money, the board has to accept them. You do, if a resident disputes their tax assessment, they can come into the Board of Selectmen. So there's a lot of really interesting, you know, minutia on how the town works that gets hashed out at the board level, which is, it's fascinating, actually. I come to a lot of the board, I try to come to most of the board meetings anyway, just because I enjoy it.
And how often does the board meet?
The board meets every two weeks, second and fourth Monday of every month. Three times here, I think we have a fifth Monday forum, which will happen later in the evening at seven o'clock start time. Regular meetings start at five-thirty generally. We have an agenda set, typically comes out the Friday before the meeting. It will be on the town website where anybody can go through. There's a packet on there, which is the same information that we get as a board. The public can have that same information, which that was a great change that we've had over the years. I know when I started coming to the meetings, it was actually kind of tough because you'd sit in the audience and they'd start talking about something on line twelve and as a member, the audience, you had no idea what was what. So it's actually great where I feel that the community members can now interact as far as follow along, whether it's electronic with the agenda. Our fifth Monday forums, we typically have an open forum where there's actually not much, if anything, on the agenda other than the availability for people to come in and, you know, speak what's on their mind.
And how many years do you serve?
The term is three years.
And how many terms are, how many positions are open for this March?
This current year, there's one position. It runs in a three-year cycle, if you want to say. One, one year, two the next year, two the following year, and then back to one.
Perfect. So we're vying for one position today?
Yes, we are.
And when is voting day?
Voting is March eighth.
Okay. And that's a Tuesday?
That's correct.
So please get out at Milford High School. And the voting hours are from six in the morning till eight o'clock at night. You have fourteen hours over the course of a day to come down to a centrally located place, this is in Texas, and make your vote. And you can usually get a pretty good snack somewhere somehow along the way. So please, you know, Tuesday, March eighth, please come down. And now that we've established that, David, let's bring you in on this. You've been around for three years in town.
Yes.
And you've been on planning boards before and budget and finance and so on. Looking at the town of Milford, what would be some ideas or what would be some things that you would want to maybe try to accomplish or what would you feel you could bring to the board?
Sure. You know, one of the things I look at, and when I was growing up, by the way, I spent a lot of time around this area. And every time we came into the Milford Oval, it was a big deal for us. So had the opportunity to move here, I'm like, awesome, we're going to go to the Milford Oval. What I see is some new restaurants down there, which is great. I think we can do more in that area to make it more friendly for the families to come in and enjoy that part of town. As well as looking out, you know, there are some areas where I think we could do, you know, some nicer things, you know, bring in business up as we go up one-on-one. And as we go out the other side of one-on-one, I'd like to see us, you know, entice folks to come in and plant their businesses and be part of the community here in Milford.
Okay. Tim, same question. As a person trying to get on the board, what would you bring to the board?
Well, as I said, I've got a lot of experience in all the, everything David just talked about. You know, that's really the purview of the planning board. And I've been on the planning board for many years. And that's exactly the kind of thing we strive to do through the master plan. And we have certain zoning overlay districts in certain areas of the town in order to encourage just that. Because there are, he's absolutely right. There's, we really need to encourage, I mean, the Oval usually is a really thriving area. It's, you know, we've seen a few vacant storefronts in the last year or so. So we need to help encourage them back in. A big part of that is parking. I suspect maybe we're going to get to that later. But parking is a huge issue in town that, especially for the Oval, it's hard to encourage businesses to come in if there's no place for their patrons to park. So we need to work on that. We need to encourage some of the outlying areas, like down the west side of Elm Street. It's a little bit, you know, I'll use the word depressed for a town like Milford. It's not quite up to the rest of the town. We really should work on that to get that going.
Okay. Chris, you've been on the board. What would you say over the last couple of years have been something you've been really proud that has happened as a board member that you've been part of? And what's a vision that you have for your next term if you're re-elected?
I feel probably one of the proudest things I am is a lot of, based on transparency. I think a lot of the things going forward, I know even before I was on the board, one of the things that I had pushed for, I spoke earlier about the packets being online. You know, as Tim had spoke back when he was on the board, I was probably one of the few audience members that were in the audience and I literally suffered that, what are you talking about thing? So that would probably be one of the big things pushing forward. I feel that we, the board as a whole, I think we've pushed forward through, we're all going, I feel, in the right direction. We just have different ways of getting there. Communications has been one of the big, I'm going to say, ticket topics. Although we may not have what I'm going to say, the same map on how to get there, I can say that the current board, I believe, has the same philosophy of where we want to be. It's just how we get there.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, communication transparency. Right now, I'm involved in it with a very large company and that's one of the things we talk about often is transparency and communication. If you don't have those combined, you're not going to get anything done. It's important that we do things for the town as well as, you know, making sure we shake the hands. Everybody has different ideas up here. We got to put it on the table and just, you know, at the end of the day, make a decision. That's good for the community, not good for me or these two folks here. It's good for the community as a whole.
Okay. And part of what's good for the community, from what you were saying, is to try to develop business?
I would think so. That would be, you know, a big part of what I look at when I drive around this part of Milford. As well as one of the other things that I'd like to be a part of, and I talk about a lot of things, so it might be this board or that board or this person. I have this tendency to see things in a much bigger way. Where I'd like to look at our, you know, property taxes and see is there a way to draw some of that back to entice some other businesses and folks to move into Milford. So I think broad. I don't think narrow.
Okay. And currently, I think last year, we had about a forty-two million dollar school budget and about a fifteen and a half million dollar town budget. In your eyes, is that fifteen and a half, because, you know, the school is obviously carved out of its own. But is that fifteen and a half million dollar town budget fair? Do you agree? Do you disagree? Either one?
I think the current budget as proposed is very fair. It's, I think it's close to sixteen-five and fifteen-five, I believe. The town's budget, we're talking just the budget itself, it actually has been very steady. It's been either flat or decreased every year for the past four or five years. It's been very steady. The increase this year, if I remember my numbers from the deliberative session, the increase is like four point something, four point two percent increase over last year, which I don't know what the CPI is these days, but I think it's around four, probably higher than that. So it's a very reasonable increase. It's hard to say there's a lot of fat in that. And even that four percent, the vast majority of that, I had the numbers, it's in here, I'm not going to open it up. The vast majority of that four point four percent increase is health insurance, New Hampshire retirement, wages, and MACBAS. That's almost the entire increase. So it's kind of hard to, you know, disagree with a budget that is only increasing by that. Okay?
I guess to take the other side of that one, Dave, I currently actually oppose the budget. I have gone through, I feel that has taken me, it's taken me, your first term, I think you come in and you have so much, there's so much knowledge, there's so much to learn. And I'd love to say that you have so much help to do it. But sometimes you actually have to go through and do it yourself, take the initiative to go through. What I've actually been able to go through and, you know, I've come to the conclusion, you know, there's over four hundred and ninety-one line items in our town budget. When you go through, it's actually eye-opening when you go through the budget itself. You start to look at the differences from previous year's budgets. I went through this year and analyzed it from the twenty-twenty budget to the twenty-twenty-one and, you know, what's proposed for twenty-two. Not that I'm saying that there's a lot of fat there. I have a lot of problems with, I've asked repetitively prior to being on the board, being on Budget Advisory, being on the board. I have a hard time with bottom-line budgeting at times. I get it that if you have to have the ability to transfer, you know, you have overages, you have underages. When I went through and analyzed the budget, I came out with probably over forty-something line items between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one where there was money allocated, but it wasn't spent on what it was allocated for. So when you see that one year, you say, okay, there was a need for it somewhere else, so then they kind of slid it here, slid it there. But when you start seeing repetitive things and then, you know, there's two years where it's not spent, but then you see it's a proposed increase on that line item. And it makes me wonder, how do you put an increase on a line item that hasn't been spent on what it was allocated for in the previous two years?
If I may, what some folks will do is they'll look at budgets, they'll go, well, I have that to spend. Or if I don't spend it, we can put it in the bank for next year or next time. It's a savings that should really be kicked back to the folks who paid the money, which are those folks sitting back over here and who are on Zoom. When I take a look at budgets, I look and see, is the spend, is the increase necessary? If it's not, we don't do it unless the community has a say. And as far as knowing whether a budget is worthy or not, we have to dig in. We have to swim around a little bit and understand, you know, what we have to spend. And then if we need more, where are we going to get that more from? And for me, it's extremely important to be transparent about what you're doing. If we didn't spend X number of dollars two years in a row, well, where did that money go? And I would be, I would be the one to absolutely first say, well, here's where the money is and here's what we're going to do with it. Does it go into a contingency fund? Does it go into a slush fund? Is it used for, you know, X piece of equipment or an upgrade to whatever piece of property or building that we're looking at? I think that transparency for the folks sitting out there and the people who own homes and businesses around here is super important.
If I can just clarify one thing, just so, I don't want people to get the impression that I'm saying that the money goes into a slush fund or goes somewhere. I guess more or less what I would like to see, and even if it's not done all in one year, but whether it's broken up into say, okay, we're going to do one department, two departments, I feel like at some point you almost have to go back to a zero-based budget on a department to rebuild the budget from zero, instead of always just looking at, okay, we're just going to add, we're just going to add percentages. To go back and say, to identify where that money got spent, you may actually say, you know, these line items really truly have been underfunded and they really should be up. I'd just like to see the numbers reallocated back to where the money's getting spent. You can also determine your need better that way, when you have more numbers in line and you're seeing where they're going.
Well, look, Tim?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, there's no question that that's a good idea. And we have a budget committee that also does that same kind of analysis. It's great. Since we're talking about that and slush money and stuff like that, I think this is a good time to talk about how the process actually works, right? So as it is, I mean, it's a bottom-line budget, but as you know, the state says it's a bottom-line budget. It's not like the town of Milford is deciding they're going to use a bottom-line budget. That's, the state dictates that. Which is a good thing, because, you know, you may not necessarily, you know, need something one year and you move it around in a different quarter or something like that. But if you don't spend the money that you're talking about, by law, the money automatically, any surplus folds over into the fund balance, which is essentially a year-over-year aggregation of all the surpluses from year to year. And when the selectmen set the tax rate every year, they have the option of taking any amount of money in that fund balance, all of it if they wanted to, and do a variety of things. They can give it back to the taxpayers by lowering the tax rate. They can propose warrant articles in future for the subsequent years that would be paid for with the fund balance as opposed to taxation, which would lower taxes that way. And there's one, and you can also use it for emergencies and things of that sort at a certain point during the year. So, but I think it's really important that, giving it back to the taxpayers, it's always a great idea. But it's, sometimes it's more useful to take some surpluses and instead of directly giving it back to the tax rate, you can use that money as, to offset spending in subsequent years. So if you had, you know, a police cruiser or something that was coming that you needed to buy in the budget the next year, and all of a sudden you have two hundred thousand dollars left in the budget the previous year, you can encumber those funds for the previous year, to the subsequent year, pay for that police car, fire truck, whatever I said. And then the next year's budget doesn't go up as high because of it. So you can actually, that, the fund balance is a great tool. I mean, it's,
It's always good to have some pocket change.
It can be good to give it back to the taxpayers, but I think most taxpayers would rather it be used to keep the tax rate smooth, to keep it going level for a number of years, as opposed to have it shooting up one year, then it goes down the next year, then it goes up the year after that. And I think historically, the selectmen have always tried to do that, to use it as kind of a smoothing thing.
I think it's a valid point. At the end of the day, that zero-based budget, where I come from, that's a real deal. You may have a budget that, you know, a two-hundred-million-dollar company gives you. You build a zero-based budget off that. It's called the ghost budget. And then you compare and you see how well you can do against that budget. When it comes to taking money and putting it back to a vehicle that we purchased or want to purchase or, you know, we were short, we had a shortfall the prior year, that's, we need to be transparent. We need to let the folks know
Oh, yeah.
where that money came from and why we're back, you know, backdating it, if you will, into the prior year in order to buy that cruiser, you know, new fire truck or whatever it is that we need to do. We just need to be transparent.
And just to follow up, using that example I used, if you were to do that, you still have to have a warrant article that says you're buying that cruiser, but you're using fund balance for it. So it is transparent.
Now, speaking of warrant articles and looking at the budget, this year, we seem to have some warrant articles thrown on the, you know, as well as the budget. Would you have rather had some of the warrant articles just encumbered into the budget? Or were you happy that they split out some of the warrant articles and anybody can?
Wants to take that one?
I'll take that one first, only because the conversation did come up at the Board of Selectmen this year. The fact of if you take some of the common warrant articles that we have on an annual basis, from fireworks to parades to parade support. The problem with doing that, though, is you can't put it in the budget and have it as a warrant article in the same year. Because if the warrant article fails, you still can't use money out of your budget. There becomes the no-means-no issue. I'm a believer, when it comes to, you know, you spoke of fund balance, you spoke of offsetting taxes, surplus. The way Tim put it is one way that the board has done it for many years. I'm actually an advocate that when we have surplus money, I actually believe that it should go back to the taxpayers. To, it is a good thing to take it off the next year's taxes, if you want to say. But unfortunately, in my belief, what you're doing at that point is you're actually making purchases without actually getting the taxpayers' approval first. So you're taking a need, and I'm not saying that it's a want, more than likely there are needs most of the time. You are taking a need off, but I'm still a believer that when you have excess money, you give it back to the taxpayer, it becomes more transparent, true budgeting on what you're looking for for money. The other drawback I see when you use surplus or fund balance money, surplus money, if you're using it, you're taking it out of the budget next year, something, the idea of a police cruiser, you're actually taking that out of the default budget. So that if the budget was to pass, a cruiser typically is in a default budget. So if the budget does fail, if it long sits in the default budget, you're still getting those cruises. If you buy them out of surplus money, it's no longer there. So if a budget fails, you would be down a vehicle in that aspect. Surplus, you know, fund balance, I should say, we have limits on what the recommendations are. We have a finance policy that says, you know, where we like to keep it percentage-wise. DRA has one also. I'm also a believer in giving money back to the taxpayers to offset the tax rate, to lower the taxes, which is ultimately the way that you give the money back to the taxpayers. CIP, like Tim was saying, CIP is more, capital improvements plan is more to me, what you would start to level your budgets with, using money out of surplus or even fund balance. Fund balance, you wouldn't, fund balance, you have two ways to give it back. You're either going to give it back to the taxpayers, three ways, I should say. Give it back to the taxpayers in an offset for taxes. Or you're going to have a warrant article saying that it's paid for out of fund balance. Or for emergencies, you would mention that. This past year, the Board of Selectmen did petition DRA to use money out of fund balance. It's all in perception. My belief is if you give it back to the taxpayers, you're giving them the say of where the money goes.
David, would you like?
Look, again, I'll say it's important that we do what's best for the community. And if it means that we end up with an overage in a budget, look, I don't know that it's right. I think there was a valid point. You don't want your property taxes to be bouncing up and down. We'd like to see them steady and then steadily drop because I think there's an opportunity to have them steadily drop. And if I, you know, the tax rate that I pay here is twice, almost three times what I was paying in another ordering town, which for me is a little bit of a head-scratcher. I'm not understanding why. In that town, you know, obviously, you have bigger schools and whatnot. So I'd take a deep dive into the budget and understand what we're spending money on. And then it's, you know, it sounds like, you know, there's some opportunities there to really help and give back to the communities.
Another issue that came up a year or so ago was the issue of the tax rate for renters versus homeowners. Is there anything on the horizon that we can look forward to or discuss about that?
You may know, have more information than I do. There actually isn't different tax rates. The issue was the assessments. So the, I think, two years ago, there was a partial reassessment done where only the apartment buildings were reassessed and not residential, or the other way around. I think the apartments were done.
There was a midterm valuation done. I think three years ago, I think it was three years ago. Then last year, we had a full evaluation.
So the problem with that is then when the tax rate gets set, you have a change in the proportions of evaluations of residential versus the apartments. And which caused the tax, you know, some people's taxes went up higher, the tax rates, the taxes went up higher and others did not. That was fixed, fixed, with most recent reassessment where those are reassessment done of every property in town. So that should be behind us.
This is a moment for me to hold on tight and say, what? Why would we assess half and assess the other half and then raise taxes? If the true assessment is not complete, part of discipline is accurate reporting of numbers. Why would we set a budget off of non-accurate numbers? It sounds like that's what we did and sounds like some of us paid the price for that. Because you just said, some taxes went up, my taxes went up, and it was a hefty amount.
I can probably speak to some of that. What, we actually brought a company in, the town brought a company in as far as to help on the assessing factor. And a lot of them is based off sales. So the residential market actually got hit harder than the commercial market now because we haven't had a whole lot of sales. So what they did is they kind of revamped it back on actual sales. It was said by our assessing department that ultimately, like, on average, like a third of the taxes went down, a third of them stayed neutral, and a third of them went up. The answer that we were given and the information we were given all had to do of reporting of sales.
I think there's more questions, so we can beat this one to death because it's a topic for more than just one person. I would say more people up there would want to probably hear more.
Oh, of course. So looking towards next year, if on the board, what is a project that you would want to undertake or take up? Here, Dave, I'll start with you and go down to Tim and Chris.
I mean, I said it already. I would like to see us bring more into the Oval and, you know, entice people to fill up those blank doors. And then out one-on-one on one side and Elm Street, one-on-one on the other side. And bring some businesses, spruce that area up because it is two different stories. When you come in from Route thirteen and you come in this way, or you come in one-on-one, or even if you come down the other side of thirteen and then you head out Elm Street. It's two totally different stories. And I think we should all want to tell the same story through Milford, is it's a nice quaint little town. Come and enjoy it, walk around with your families and enjoy, you know, the different restaurants and businesses that are around. And right now, that feel is not over there.
So your project would be to try to get one-on-one east and west to bulk up a little?
Sure.
Okay. Tim?
There's a few things actually that I think need to be addressed. Number one is taking care of the emergency management, the emergency services communications issues that's been plaguing the town for years now. Currently, there's a plan in place, so hopefully that will pan out over, I think they're doing the testing of the new equipment this summer. So hopefully that pans out. That's got to be taken care of top priority. The other thing I mentioned earlier was parking. Parking is a huge problem here in town. We got a little reprieved because of COVID for the last two years because nobody was parking. So prior to COVID, there was, it seemed like there was finally critical mass to get something done. There was a committee formed to work on it. There were some various proposals done for solving the parking problem. And COVID hit and all of a sudden, it was no longer a priority. But we need to take care of that. We need to either, I would like to see maybe something done with the library when they finally get their work done, the renovations that they need done over there. There was, I think, two years ago when their last addition was proposed, they actually had an engineering, or the town had a They actually had an engineering or, or the, the town had an engineer come in and design new parking for that parking lot behind the library. And they were able to, um, squeeze in an additional, I think, sixty spaces over to that lot for, uh, a total of ninety-eight. There's like thirty spots over there. There, there was a plan, they could add sixty spots over there, and it would add like two hundred thousand dollars to the price tag of the renovations that was going to be done over there anyway. That didn't happen, uh, unfortunately, I think that's a great place to do it. We have, we have options in town, we have a, the, the Putnam Street parking lot, that there could be renovations done to that. And I know there was a proposal for another parking lot, parking, um, structure on private property that, um, uh, didn't go anywhere because, you know, we lost our mojo, uh, when this started. But I really want to see that, um, go forward.
So improving parking in the, down in the Oval area would be a key one for you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and that will, that will go to help the, you know, happen to know this beautiful building across the street that was renovated years ago. You know, they, they're having trouble, they've had a couple of, um, nibbles for a restaurant upstairs, but there's no parking. So would you bring your business into town, you know, and, and there's no parking for it, so.
Chris?
Yeah.
And then David, you want to say something?
I, I think parking definitely is a, a hot topic. There, there, there does seem to be a divide though, and where people think there becomes a problem out of it. I know, and Tim, you can relate to this, I know how many committees you're on. There's a lot of weeks that I know I'm here, sometimes two to three nights a week in Town Hall. And I, I always really normally find a parking space, my meetings typically start between five-thirty and seven, give or take. I typically don't walk more than ninety seconds or two minutes away. I, I think that you have some people that, that they want parking, they want front row parking. I, I, I understand where they're coming from on it. I really am not on board with the parking structures, you know, I, I hear all the time, if we were to put in a parking garage, you know, we, we can do that. My question is, well, how, how do you charge for that? And most of the time, the answer is, well, we shouldn't. We, we should just let the taxpayers pay for it. I, I don't really agree with that. I think as everything comes with a cost, you have to find, you, you're going to put a structure up which is going to have maintenance, um, which would go to the other thing that I'd like to see more happen in town is that I feel in, in Milford, we have a lot of great assets. We have a lot of things I feel that we need to focus more on maintenance, whether it be Town Hall, whether it be the gazebo, whether it be any of the buildings that we have. I, I think if we take a deep part and look at a lot of stuff in, in Milford, i- it's not that I think by fault that we're ignoring it. It, it's price tags, as we all know, are so big and it's hard to, it's hard to prioritize which ones you actually want to do. But, but I think we actually need to stop a- and look at some of the things to maintain facilities, roads and stuff that we have. Versus, um, I, I agree as far as expanding on the, on the one-on-one side. We also have a lot of things that have changed over the years, from the, from one-on-one coming through, creating the bypass, that created a, a divide. You always hear from a lot of people, dead man's alley, anything west of the Oval. A lot of people don't drive that way, i- if you're coming up from Nashville, you're coming from Manchester, you, you're going to take one-on-one and you're going to shoot right to the other end. So is there a way to develop it? You know, the town has come through, we, we've come up with a lot of incentives, i- as far as, I'm going to use the term tax breaks, um, to try and draw in. And, and I know that there definitely has been some businesses that have taken advantage of that. I, I guess maybe we could relook, see where that's at, but I think we have to be careful not to give too much away to, to make it happen. We have to do it where it's affordable and effective, where you're not having a company come in and say, okay, we're going to give you all this. They come in, they set up, and then they leave before they actually, I'm going to say, start generating revenue back in.
Sure, a little bit of paint and a little bit of cleaning goes a long way, just FYI on that part of town.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think we could be a, a little bit better on that side of town. Um, when it comes to parking, I don't know if you all noticed that gas station that's on one side of thirteen.
Yes, we, we have.
How long has that been vacant?
Tim, you probably know that more than me.
Oh, I, it's been vacant for a long time.
H B the Irving, the Irving.
I mean, what a spot for a little parking spot to come in if we're worried about more parking.
It's privately owned and, uh, I, I don't want to cut you off, but I could, a couple of follow-ups. Um, as far as the parking, Chris, I mean, I, I actually agree with you and I've used the word, I, I'll get back to you.
No, no, it's all right, cut me off.
Because you threw that out, no, I, I asked you, I asked you. Um, um, see, now I've lost my train of thought. No, I, I agree with you about the parking, and, and I've said this many times, that parking in Milford is an enigma. It's bizarre because you're right, if you, if you drive around two, three times max, you will find a spot. But the, the problem is really about businesses. I'm talking about attracting businesses to come into town, and they're not going to say, oh, yeah, just tell your thirty restaurant patrons to drive around for three times.
Well, who goes out to breakfast on Saturday mornings? Anyone? Anyone here? Everyone.
Milford?
It's, it's hard to find a spot. And, and look, I, I'm a fan of walking, I don't mind, I don't mind walking. But it would be good to have, you know, I came down for the festival we had with all the food trucks and whatnot, and we're bussing people in left and right. Wouldn't be bad to have a little bit of closer parking for people to walk, was it ninety seconds or a minute to, to wherever they want to go? So, look, I think we, there's a whole bunch of things that we can look at and do. It all comes back to that, that thing we started at the beginning is looking at it, budgeting it out and getting it done, getting the approvals, the proper approvals, uh, to get things done. If something's owned privately, um, you know, I've, I've, I've in my past have been able to talk our way into having property donated. Um, I don't know if this is an option that we could talk to this person, it's been, it's been empty for a long time. Maybe we could make a deal, a deal to get the, um, to get the property and, and outfit it with some parking spaces, who knows? Unless you ask and, and try.
Part of the problem, and, and Chris pointed this out too, is people don't want to walk that far. We have a, we have a, a public lot next to the police station, which is just as close as that Irving station, and nobody parks it.
I wouldn't make that assumption, I would give the choice of the parking and, and see what happens. Um, I'd never liked to walk, but now I love walking. See what happens over time? People don't mind walking a little bit.
Well, speaking of walking, and this is the most important question of the night, because more people are focused on this than any other question. So we might have to get commitments from all three of you. Amherst recently has built a crosswalk to nowhere, you could argue. And what I'm wondering is, as a member of next year's Board of Selectmen, would you be in favor of continuing and meeting to, to bridge that, you know, that, that, that relationship with our, our neighboring town? Would you want to build a walkway going out towards the Amherst, um, walkway to meet it? So that somebody could actually walk from Oval to Amherst Green?
I'd ask him first because I was going to cut him off, so.
Oh, sure, fine.
I'm a huge fan of building bridges, um, with, within, amongst people. Uh, look, if, if this is something that people want, um, I would say yes, I would commit to it. I'm not trying to be a wishy-washy, I think it's important to find out if that's what we want. Do we want the ability to walk to the other side? Do we? If we do, we do. If we don't, then we could hold, there could be more important pressing things to do. Um, but if this is a hot topic, that should have been number one. And, and I would say if there's a, if there's a, um, you know, the contingent of folks on the high side is yes, we do it, then we do it.
Tom, you want to go?
I'd gladly go.
You go and I'll go after you.
I, I do know, Dave, that the discussion has been had, um, a discussion has been had with, with the Board of Selectmen as far as to meet with the town of Amherst to discuss the options. Uh, my own personal opinion on this comes down to, you're asking sort of a loaded question. Are you, are you asking to bring that, um, I can't remember the, the term that they called it, the modal path, meaning, because they don't call it a sidewalk.
I know, I, I, I didn't know what they called it either.
So, so my question comes down to, in order to bring that, there was discussions of bringing that all the way down to St. Pat's. Or, or even all the way up to Summer Street. I don't know, I would be more in favor if they would, if the, the taxpayers had interest in connecting, what is it, I think, two house lots, I, I think possibly.
It's not long.
There, there's only, I think, one or two house lots as far as that divide the Amherst to, to the Milford. I, I, I think in something of that nature, that actually could be something we may be able to do, what I'm going to use the term, in-house, without going out for, you know, a multimillion dollar sidewalk warrant article. I, I don't know if that answers your question.
What a drawbridge, Jim.
So, okay, so I, I know a good deal about this, um, because they, they came to the planning board, the, uh, Amherst Planning Board and their little group that formed this, that wanted to do it, they, they, their marketing term was, um, the green to the Oval, I think. They wanted to be able to, you know, go from there to there. And the, the short answer to your question is no, I don't support it because there are far too many other sidewalks that need to be built in Milford long before we need to build a hundred yards out, you know, on the border of Amherst. And it is a very short walk. And wh- what can be done up there is, um, you can work with developers, now I don't know that there's any more developer land, but you work with developers and you try to get them to, um, add sidewalks and, and such to their plans. There's a, right where this thing finishes, or just, just after it finishes, is the new, I think it's, is it Curtis Commons? No.
No.
Clifford? Clifford. Clifford. Uh, it's a new street right up across the street from the dentist, right on board. And when they came to the planning board, we had it as a contingency for them to get approved, that they had to build a sidewalk across their property. That wasn't enough, it didn't go all the way, but at least we got a little bit of ways there. Before we ever do a sidewalk like that, we have to take care of Nashville Street down by Shaws and, and all that. That's an absolute death trap up there. And there are people, you see, you know, little old ladies pushing shopping carts in the breakdown lane, going from Shaws to the, to the, um, stores up there. That has to, we have to put sidewalks there long before we put any kind of a bi-modal in anything for Amherst. So there you go.
It was a question that, it was a question that the constituents threw out to me and I, I told them I'd ask, and so.
You don't want the little ladies pushing carts across the street.
All right, and these are, again, these are questions that people have, have sent in to me, so that's kind of what I'm, I'm working with. Something that, one of the questions, you know, now that you've all been in Milford for many years, and I've asked this actually in the past. I'm proud to be a Milford citizen because, dot, dot, dot.
Me, okay.
Sure.
Um, actually, that's a pretty easy question. I mean, Milford really is, it, it sounds kind of cliché and kind of, um, um, sappy, but Milford really is different than a lot of towns. You mentioned the Oval. I mean, the Oval is very unique, I mean, not many, you don't see the many of those anymore in, in New England towns. So Milford is just physically the community, it's a great community, you know, it, it's, it's the intersection of two major roads. So you've got a, you've got a really good demographic of people, you have a beautiful downtown, and we have an absolutely amazing volunteer base. And this town's lifeblood is volunteers, it really is, I mean, forget about the Board of Selectmen. It's, you know, we have volunteer groups that do numerous things in town that, that, um, just make it so special. Um, I mean, the latest one is the one we all see, you know, people call Milford Stonehenge, the, the new stage down by the entrance to Keys over there. It's a beautiful, beautiful stage that did not cost the town a dime. That came in, that was, that was, that material was donated, that was a, um, a building on a quarry down on Tenella Road that was going to be torn down. The owners donated the, the granite to the town, someone stepped up and delivered it over to that site. There was, um, you know, the craftsmen that built it, put the roof on, everything was done either completely, uh, in kind or through donations. So those kind of things happen a lot in Milford, and we have to, we have to encourage it to continue. The, um, the, the perm attached building, you know, the, the new, the, the, um, new land to the west of Keys Field, that, that whole property was purchased, I don't know, I don't know, it was five years ago, ten years, it was a while ago now, that, um, hundred percent donations. Primarily, there were three groups in town that got together and donated like a hundred and ten thousand dollars or something or other to buy that property. So that was completely out of the goodness of the community as a whole, we got that whole addition to a park. We've got, you know, same thing, there's a, um, the, the swinging bridge is being repaired, hopefully that's not going to cost the town any, the town any money. The state's getting involved in that, but there's donations. The bandstand, am I pointing in the right direction? The bandstand needs work, so that's the thing that I love about this town. It's, and that's why I'm so involved, that's why I love to join these, you know, whenever these committees form, I say, oh, I'll join it, you know, it's like, and then my wife gets mad at me because, you know, I'm gone yet another night during the week. But that whole community spirit is the thing that I love most about this town.
Chris? And I feel that Milford has like a couple of different dynamics, you know, there, there's actually a lot of people in Milford that, you know, consider it like a commuter town. Like, they, they come here to sleep, they, they go, you know, whether down to Massachusetts, you know, Nashville, Manchester. I, I feel I've always fallen to be one of those people that, like, seeing as I work in town, ninety-five percent of my work is in Milford. And, and I feel that we have a great array of services, a- anything that, you know, we have a lot of, for my business, for say, we have plenty of vendors, you know, you can always get parts. You, you can, there, there's so much here that we can get buying local that we don't actually have to travel far for. Um, and we have, like, like Tim said, we have this quaint little town where we have our downtown, we have our, our shopping areas. We, we have room to expand, I, I think we just need to look and watch how we do it.
Dave?
So I, I've been here for, you know, three and a half years, but as a kid, you know, played around, uh, Milford, went to the Milford drive-in, uh, enjoyed this town for, for many years. Um, and I'm, I'm proud to, you know, find the house that we, my wife and I did, and we moved here. To be part of the community, the people that are sitting out there and other people that, you know, walk down the street and you say hi to someone. So I come from Murmuk prior Nashville, and I would walk down the street and say hi to someone, and they would just walk by. In Milford, people pick their head up and say hello. So that, that's what really brings me, you know, to be, say I'm proud to be a, a, a Milford, uh, Milfordite. Would that be right?
We've had this discussion, I think, on Facebook.
Anywho, so proud, so proud that, yeah, you know, I have a, a couple cousins and, 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 uh, and brothers and sisters I'm trying to lure into, um, Milford, and I was successful. I have my namesake cousin, David Cottonzano, who has since moved in, and, uh, one of my other cousins has moved on the, just barely on the outskirts of, of Milford, who come in and enjoy, we get together and, and we have a good time together. So I really enjoy this town and I would look forward to enjoying it many years, uh, in the future.
Okay, um, I know we talked about parking and we've talked about east-west one-on-one. But if you did have a magic wand and you could fix, like, what would be something that you would want to maybe fix in Milford? That, that is, is a gnar and problem towards, to, to you, like, what, what's something that, if you could change something, this would be something I'd, I'd really focus on?
That isn't being proposed?
That isn't being proposed, right, we've already kind of heard those. Is there something you would uplift about Milford?
Well, I, I'll jump in there, it's being proposed, but I'll, um, I'll say the library.
And let me just say that separately, I, I was talking about cars and, and, um, east-west, so that's, that's a new topic, go ahead, the, the library, perfect.
Okay, no, because I, I think the library, it, it's such an interesting topic because you hear there's two camps of people. There, there are people that say that a library is not needed anymore, you, you've got the internet, why are you going to go to a library? But libraries have changed, they're, they're different. I, I've, I've spoken to a lot of the library trustees and I've actually, you know, advocated saying, stop calling the library, come up with a different name, you know, call it the Milford, you know, community resource.
But that's what it is, and that's what the kids are going to know it as.
Well, exactly, and, and they want, and, and there's reasons why you can't because of the.
Yeah, yeah, you can make it interactive and, and call it a, you know, a, a library, interactive zones or whatever.
But one of the things that, 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 that a library needs to do is it, it needs to be, you know, we're all used to working from home now. It, it, it needs to be a place where you can go, it's not, you're not going to go to check out a book or a DVD. Maybe you're going to go and you're going to, you're, you're going to work, maybe it's, it's going to be like a, you know, a, a WeWork type place where you go and you, you'll work there. It can be a community resource center, it can be a senior center. But we need to have that community, kind of folds back to what I said, community is so huge in Milford. You need to have the facilities to encourage that. And the library, you know, maybe not in, in, I mean, the, the warrant article for libraries just for, for, um, to repair things, so, so it's really different. But if I had a wet magic lo- wand and endless money, I, I would, um, have a world-class library built up in the hill.
Originally under like the.
With parking.
With, yeah, no kidding. With, with the proposed library, a couple of years ago, there was a, a cafe in there, there were like, there were room, breakout rooms, if you would, for a variety of items.
Yep.
So in terms of communitarianism, that could be a center.
I, I've told this story before, and, and I know Milford is no Boston, of course it's not. But if anyone's ever gone down to the Boston Public Library, you can spend an entire day there and just, they've got, they've got a radio studio there, a cafe, they've got traditional library stuff, they've got little offices where you, you can go work for a while and then come back and watch, you know, WBUR do their, their newscast. Now, we'd never do that on that scale in Milford, but it goes to show what a community resource, something like that really can be. And that's a very heavily used library up there.
Dave or Chris?
What are we waving the magic wand to fix? You said cars and.
Basically to uplift, well, I, I, I'm sorry, what was your?
No, no, you, you said cars or, or parking?
Oh, no, what I meant, what I meant to say was we've already talked about, you wish you could improve, you know, the businesses east and west on one-on-one, and we wished we could do parking garage or find parking spots. So you don't have to regurgitate that que, that answer. I was saying if you, if there was something else other than those two that would uplift, that you thought could uplift the community or something that you would want to fix in the community, um, what would that be?
I mean, I think this type of meeting, you had said it earlier, or one of you two had said it earlier, that, you know, a bigger meeting room so more people could join once we're over this whole COVID thing. But I also think one of the big things that maybe we look past and maybe take for granted, I don't know, is our, our emergency service folks. Um, I was talking to two police officers who looked at me and said, I said, well, how many are you there in Milford? And they said, the two of us. I said, I know you're here, I can see you, but how many really are you? Um, and I think we're way understaffed, um, here. So if I could wave my magic wand, which is kind of weird for me to say, um, I, I would like to find out why and then get some sort of recruitment program so that we're outfitted with a proper amount of, um, uh, safety services, emergency services in the town of Milford.
Perfect, Chris?
I, I could touch upon where, where, where Dave just did, a- and I think that some of that from a board standpoint, you know, a- as our department heads bring to us, I think a lot of our challenges we have right now through the emergency services, including DPW, bringing them to the fore. We, we have a, I call it, it's an economical crunch right now as far as you have so many positions, you have so many options as an individual. You know, let's face it, all of us could actually almost change our professions by, by walking into anywhere now. Like, everybody now is throwing money at everybody, the question is how long does it last? How long does it stay that way, you know? How long does it stay that way? You know, do we want to keep, you know, the employees that we have? Absolutely, we do. We have phenomenal employees in the town of Milford. Majority of them are extremely long-term employees. Is there going to come a time where some of them may transfer to other, either municipalities or just even other careers? That that is something that we do suffer. I I guess I feel that's one thing, you know, I'd like to see more, you know, we we've talked about it for the last couple of years. You know, we had talked about actually putting it out to have a consultant do a survey. I think it's something that we can do internal and still something that I would love to see as far as to get wages in line, to keep our employees, to keep our staff. Milford has historically been known as a training ground, which I guess is good that, you know, people come to us, people think of us as a great place to come and learn. But the problem is, is they don't stay. They come here, they get their certifications, and then they move on. So I I would agree with you on on that, Dave, that that is definitely a good thing as far as town staff in general, I guess, to to mutate it that way.
One of the things, when I was growing up, I always looked at the the folks who were doing whatever they were doing, whether it was tarring or or plowing or whatever, and say, man, that'd be cool to do that. Is that not cool anymore? Do they not think it's cool anymore? Talking about an outside company coming in and doing a survey, have we asked them? Is your job cool? Do you like it? What don't you like? What can we, what can we do better for you as, you know, the the town? I mean, they really are the heartbeat of this town. They're going out and they're doing the things that we need to have done so that we can get around. And if we're not talking to them and we're losing some to other businesses, you know, we got to build that loyalty back up.
Agreed.
Awesome. Okay, speaking of surveys and stuff, and again, you can tell me if this question is not relevant or not, but somebody sent in a question that said, Milford has a reputation of putting town studies on a shelf and ignoring them. What do you believe town government should do to see that these plans are considered? I honestly
Can I go, please? If we're going to do a study, if it, we've got to follow it to the end. We can't put it on a shelf. And we're doing a huge disservice to who, to whatever study we ran and the people who were involved in that study or whatever, and a disservice to the folks sitting out there with the time, effort, and money wasted on said study. So I'd love to take a look at some of those studies on the shelf, you know, and if I become selectman, I guess I I would have the opportunity to do so. And then make sure we follow these to fruition is one thing that, you know, my my uncle used to say to me, which his name is also David Cottonzano. I knew I'd get all three in on this on this deal, is that if you're not going to do it to the end, don't even bother starting it. Right? So I would, I would make sure that if we started a study, we would follow it to the end and 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 just be transparent about what the what the outcome was.
Okay.
Yeah, I I don't know who sent that in, but I would agree with a thousand percent. I mean, not necessarily literally studies, but the town does have a problem with not following through with things that it encourages to happen. And there is actually two examples on the warrant article this this year. There are perfect examples of that. One is the tearing down the the building at Keys Field, the old Permattach Building. There was, as I said earlier, that whole property was purchased with donated monies, you know, and part of the understanding, it wasn't, there was certainly no commitment, but part of the understanding was that that building probably was going to have to go away because there's, it it's in the wrong place for the land, because the land goes out behind it and in front of it. But so, yeah, so there was a study, there was a consultant hired and a and a group done, a study done on the whole park on on where the walking trails should go, where different things should go, and part of that study is determined to tear down that building. And the, and it's on the, actually, it was on the warrant article, it was it was a proposed warrant article earlier in the year. The selectmen chose not to even put it on the ballot, not only not support it, but they said, we're not even going to put it on the ballot. And it's now on the ballot as a result of a petition, 25 or however many citizens it takes to get a a warrant article. So but there, whether or not you agree that that needs to be done, that's an example of going through all those steps, and then at the last minute just saying, never mind, we're not going to do it. I I I think of the libraries being something very similar. There was never, oh, there were lots of studies done by those folks. But every year, there's been, in the last seven, six, seven years, I think there's been five proposals for work done over at that library. And every year, they've always been told, it's not, it's, this isn't the year, this isn't the year for the library. Well, I get news for you, it's never going to be the year for a library, never. I mean, it's never, ever will be a top priority. So if you support libraries, you have to, I mean, you have to realize that you're going to do this when there's a fire truck also that's necessary. Because it'll never in a million years will a library be the number one priority in the town. So they keep coming back, and and they say, okay, here's, and, you know, I I support this warrant article this year, but I, twice in the past, I've not supported, because I think they've, they overshot a few times. So I've I've not always been a supporter of what they planned over there. But they come back, and to their credit, you know, the selectmen will say, no, you know, there's too much money, it's got to be a phased approach. So come back, and with, so they come back the next year with a phased approach, they don't support that. Then they come back a year later and they say, well, okay, the building's falling apart, fix the building first and then come to us. So then they come back the next year and say, okay, we need money to fix the the HVAC system, and they don't support that. So that's an example where it's not a study per se, but that's an example of the town not following through with things that it at least implicitly supported and gave the go-ahead to. And it's very disheartening to groups that are trying to push this, the recreation people that are pushing Keys and the library. It's very disheartening because they're like, well, what do we have to do?
What else do we
We're doing exactly what you're telling us to do, and you still don't support us.
Hey, Dave, did you want to follow up before?
No, no.
Oh, Chris, go ahead, please.
I I guess my opinion of studies in the town of Milford is, I I, first of all, I'm I'm a believer that depending on how you set up your study, setting up the parameters in the beginning, a study can, a lot of the times, let's say it can be manipulated to what you want as an end product. We we have had many studies in town, and I'm not saying that all these studies fall under that that category. I I that I'm just simply stating what I feel the study, what can happen with them. You know, you you take the 127 Elm, for instance, you know, I I agree with Tim, that was that was donations. But keep in mind, it wasn't 100% donation. The the taxpayers swallowed $90,000 of of forgiving taxes on that. So it, some of it, you know, I'm going to say, some of the joy does have to go to the rest of the taxpayers saying, we contributed to it. But but I guess I feel, you know, that study, for instance, there was a lot of literature put out, and I I've talked to a lot of people as far as that. And in looking for the end result on what they're looking for is an eight to a $10 million venture, which I've talked to a lot of people that aren't opposed to doing stuff. But i- is it really, is eight to 10 million what we're looking for? So so you you kind of have to tune down some of them. I I think with every study, you know, there there does become some eye-opening information that you get out of it that you you can't necessarily, you you shouldn't take it and throw it on the shelf. I I'm going to agree with that. You you should be able to take it and say, okay, how how does it fit? But but I think studies basically come back with a decision on the information and how it was provided to the consultant that does the study.
Okay.
Well, so there are two points. One, I think the library is very important to you, and I appreciate that more than you know. Secondly, if if we're talking a project costs $10 million, the problem with, you know, towns and and big cities and whatnot is it always seems to cost more to do something. When I think about building a $14 million building, and I look at the library and I say, that's not a $14 million building. What does the build-out actually look like? And do we have folks, it may or may not be within our purview, to take a look at it with our backgrounds and say, hmm, makes sense, hmm, doesn't make sense, to spend that kind of money, let's go find someone else. How many bids are we getting? We're going to find the right people to do the bids, and are we having, having them throw blind, blind bids? Blind bids are the way to go, not not open bids, because people take it more seriously and they're and they're apt to come in lower. So there's a whole bunch of things we could do to get what you want, and a whole bunch of things to just finish things, finish things. And I think, again, I I'm going to connect that other part because it is important to me, the other, the Elm Street part. It's almost like we started something and we stopped, and we just didn't finish it, and I and I, it's making sense to me now. When I drive, now I just connected it. So we start things and we don't finish them, we got to finish them. If it takes a little longer and a little more attention to detail, I talk about this with the with the folks that I work with at the company is, be intentional about what we're doing. Be intentional and get it done. If you're not going to get it done, I have another phrase, it's get S done. Just get it done and and figure it out. We can figure it out. We're smart people. Right? We're all smart people. We can figure it out and get done. We need to get done for the town of Milford.
And as you said earlier, you know, in terms of big cities versus little cities, Milford is only about, what, 16,000 people roughly? How accessible do you feel you are to the rest of the community? And also, is there any other ways, there was a question here that like, how how could you improve communication between the board and the residents? So let me throw out, you know, how accessible do you feel you are to the community? And is there any way to maybe improve communication other than obviously showing up at meetings and using Zoom?
I'll start with that. As far as how accessible I feel I am to the community, I feel I'm extremely accessible. Back when I originally ran for the board three years ago, I think I was one of the only ones that put my cell phone number and my email address and everything right right in the voter's guide. I I actually have a lot of people that that reach me that way. I get a lot of people in the community because I'm fortunate enough to work in town that that I I become more accessible because people see me, and they're like, hey, you know, you're the one I see on TV, you know. And I I think that the board overall is accessible. I do believe that communication with residents could be much better with with the Board of Selectmen. I I will say, in the three years I've been on the board and the many years I've followed it before, I think that, I think we have to find a way to, I'm going to say, coexist, work with residents a- as board members more. I I know that at times we have people, especially since the pandemic, like Tim was saying, on on Zoom that ask questions. There's a lot of questions that that get asked, and historically, sometimes they don't get followed up with as much as what they should. And and as we all know, there's a lot of people that are intimidated to come to these board meetings. They they think that it's, I'm going to say, almost like going to court where everything's formal, everything. I feel we're a pretty relaxed board in Milford. I I feel we're pretty approachable.
So I don't want to butt in, but wave the magic wand. You said that the communication isn't there or lacking a little. What could, what could be done to get that communication improved? Could they use like a snippets of, Granite Town Media could publish, you know, snippets of, these are the important things, a page or what?
Well, you bring up Granite Town Media, which is a great point, because Granite Town Media, in my eyes, has been substantial i- i- as far as people being able to go back, watch through the videos. It it was hard before when you could only come to a meeting. If you missed the meeting, you could only go back through the minutes. You can only get so much out of minutes. See, you you can't actually get the feel of of what happens. So I think Granite Town Media has been essential on on getting a lot of this information out. I I I guess I'm not really sure what what the definitive answer is, you know, I I always joke with people, I'm like, hey, you know, you got a question, you know, feel free to ask me. I'm like, also, feel free to ask me, but feel free to come on in and sit in the chair, and you know, come down and meet the rest of the board. You know, you you may, as Tim said, you you kind of also try and push that volunteer dialogue, that, you know, come on and meet meet people. You know, you you may get enthralled in all of the town workings on how it works, and you may get into volunteering and become more part of the town.
Yeah, no, I I I think, I don't know whether you meant that individually or just in in general, but I think individually, everyone is pretty accessible. I mean, I had my cell phone up there.
Sure.
And um, and I think everyone else does. I actually am very impressed with the the board and the town in general. I think it's a very, very open, accessible, of course, it takes initiative to do it, so there's two pieces to it, right? There's like, if anyone wanted to find out, you know, what's going on with this, what what are they building down here? I mean, you can walk in Town Hall and and they will answer your questions. You can find, there are people that that will, you know, address pretty much any issue you have. And the Board of Selectmen, I mean, I've reached out to every single one of them at different times personally, you know, and, you know, they're all very accessible. I think that's great, a great, a great thing, and I don't think anything needs to change there. There is a perception thing, though, to what Chris was talking about, where people don't, people, before Zoom, people didn't want to come here for some reason. I don't really know why, because it is, actually, you come to a board meeting and and actually, you know, things like zoning or planning are usually more boring than the than the board, you know. I don't know why people don't, but people tend not to come. I think Zoom has made it a lot better because people do join Zoom and they can just sit there and learn what people probably are right now, which is a really good thing. I think the only thing you can do to make that better is just, you know, push out and encourage people to take advantage of that. Because, you know, it's, all the information is there, and both Chris and I are on Granite Town Media, as are you, Dave, as a coincidence, there you go. We have a forum, actually.
Full disclosure.
We take care of some business. And
I'm not on Granite Town.
Well, you may be soon. But we're always talking about things we can do to improve that. I mean, you had mentioned the agendas. One of the technologies that exists that we haven't done yet, but to be able to bookmark agendas, and you can go onto an agenda and say, I want to go to this part of the video where they're talking about 127 Elm, and so you don't have to sit through the whole thing. So things like that will just make it easier, and then maybe you can do the little snippets and stuff like that. Social media is an obvious one, but that's something, as we all know, that tends to be such a, you know, a cesspool that I don't know that it's a good idea for public officials to engage too much there.
Yeah, if I may, I would stay away from social media and
But i- i- if it wasn't so bad, it'd be a great vehicle. Too bad we couldn't have a Milford Twitter or something.
You said something key, it's, and you you did as well, that perception of people is, it's one way or the other, perception is their reality. And how do you change somebody's reality? I'm a people person. I don't know if you guys can tell that. If we're going to be, you know, at the center of a a town doing things for folks, we need to make the effort to get out there. I too, without a doubt, as I as I have in my past, my cell phone number would be readily available, my emails would be readily available. But I would go into breakfast, and if I see somebody, I'd just go shake their hand, go shake their hand. You know, say, what's bothering you today? Or 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 join every event that we can possibly join where it's not a meeting like this so that people become more comfortable with you, so they'll be happy to sit in front of you and be able to listen. Plus, this is a stuffy room. I don't know, we can only fit 12 people in here to a 416.
But it's a tough most important
It is warm tonight.
Well, I'm sure all those folks are important, but if you want to have, if if you want to have a good a good attendance at a meeting, you can only fit so many people in here. So would you change the venue to bring more folks in and 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 make it more, I say, an interactive point?
If I could just touch upon that for a second, over the years that I've been involved in this, and I'm not even saying during my term, I think it actually happened prior to me. I I think the accessibility has been there, but between whether you come into the room, if it does get to the point where there's more people or they know that there's a hot topic on the agenda, they will actually go through, we have a TV out in the lobby with sound and everything, and they will fill that with chairs also. And I can tell you, in all the years that I've been involved in it, I can't say that I've seen more than two people sitting out in the lobby.
Well, so I'll make a, I'll make a quick point. When I, when I, I was a board director up in in a town I was involved in, in Washington, New Hampshire. And when we first started, we had the same thing, two, three people, four people, five people, 10 people, 20 people. What changed? We were interactive with the group, and they felt like, I I don't want to speak for you too, because honestly, I don't know, it'd be great to get to know you better, is, in the towns that I come from, the selectmen would drive by your by your house at 50 miles an hour, just so they didn't have to talk to you. You would walk into a town hall and you would, I I know you, oh, you're the town manager, or you're the man, where are you going? That's the moment where we get to interact with our with our with our people. It's not about this brick building. It's about what we're doing out there and the comfortability they feel. If they know me personally, chances are my entire family would be here if they all knew I was coming. None of them know I'm here, by the way.
And and I think that a lot of, I'm going to say our select board, Tim, you you can probably agree with this, Paul Darje and the audience can probably agree with it. I go to Market Basket. Dave's, sorry. Dave just talks to everybody, though.
Do you have a cloak on?
No, you don't.
Is his name David?
Yes.
What are you doing over there? He should be over here.
It it does become, you know, it is, sometimes it's actually a challenge. I I love it, though. You you know, anywhere you go in Milford, it's not uncommon, you will have somebody, you'll bump into somebody, whether they're a volunteer, whether they're a resident, whether it's somebody with a concern that says, hey, you know, I I saw your last meeting, you know, this, and, you know, they'll kind of, they'll kind of pick you that way. So it it, I think there is great communication one-on-one in the public with people. But but I just, I would love to try and find the barrier on what it takes to get people to come.
Well, I think if we, I think if we go to the Milford School Board and take notes and see what draws people there, you know, I I think that's
Well, I think we know what draws people there, so let's stay away from that right now.
Next question. So anyway, and I'm saying that as a former teacher. So we're basically at our hour. What I'd like to do is throw out our, the last question I told you I'd ask you is, you know, we've had an amazing discussion. In fact, for the last 15 minutes, I feel like I could have just sat next to Dave, because you all were having a great discussion amongst yourselves. And I think that's the most important thing about, you know, what we're doing tonight. And like you said, Dave, there are, everybody on this, there are three amazing people that are are all intelligent, all amazing, and and all well-qualified. Is there anything else that you'd want the voters to know about you as a candidate? And I know I started with Chris the first time to introduce. I'll start with Dave and go that way.
Sure. So I I have sat on a couple of boards before and have joined these meetings and and had the opportunity to make, help make decisions for for communities in in a couple of other towns. So I I do bring that experience as well as business experience. I've had the the pleasure and opportunity to run multi-multi-million dollar companies. Right now, I'm involved in a 300 million dollar company, and, you know, dealing with everything that falls under that roof, I feel like you are running a small town. There's over 1,000 employees that I have to make sure I'm accessible to, and, you know, you name it, construction, invoicing, going out for bids, doing doing everything and anything that, and I do know what a selectman does, anything and everything a selectman does and more. I think the 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 thing I can be most prideful of is I know every single employee that I have the opportunity to work for. I know every name, and I know a little bit about their family only because they want to tell me. I would take that same mentality into their family only because they want to tell me. I would take that same mentality into a position like this, and get to know as many of the town folk as possible, and really, you know, work for them. You know, just because I have this, would potentially have this, this title, doesn't mean anything to me if I'm not bringing the folks along with me and having them understand what we're doing for them.
Tim? Just one clear, is this our final statement? Are we done?
Yeah, I think we're in a good spot here.
Okay, good. Well, not good, but. So, no, I just want to, first, I want to thank you and Granite Town Media for doing this. This was great. And Chris and Dave, this was, this was, this was fun. I think it's safe to say that no matter, which one of us wins, I think the town's in good hands. So I think we're good. All I would just say, I think I would like to be a selectman again because I think I have a lot to offer. I've got the, I have the experience, I've done it before, so I, you know, I could come on board and hit the ground running on day one. You know, there's really, there's really very little ramp-up time for me. But I also, I think I have the kind of temperament. I'm pretty easygoing, you know, I, I, you know, I've dealt with virtually everybody in town, from the most conservative to the most liberal, and then, you know, it's like, you know, I can get along with everybody. I think I would bring a good temperament to the, to the board and to try to maybe encourage some, encourage a little bit more compromise, maybe. You know, sometimes I think the board doesn't, you know, we talked about perception before. Sometimes it gives a perception, I think, of that they don't, they don't, well, they don't agree on a lot of things a lot of times. And that's unfortunate. I mean, we do, we elect five selectmen for a reason. You know, you want five different points of view. You want five different, you want debates, you want a healthy debate. You want people trying to convince each other of their positions. That's really important. But at the end of the day, the board should at least be attempting or at least striving towards speaking with one voice, because, you know, part of the job is really, you know, you'll get elected to go do the hard work on behalf of all the people in town that are really just living their lives. You know, they're going to work and coming home and taking the kids to soccer practice. You know, they, they don't, you know, care about whether or not you have enough salt for the storm on Friday. You know, they don't care about that sort of stuff, and they depend on the selectmen to do that. But they also depend on the selectmen, I think, for being, you know, their advisors. They're the ones that, you know, if they're going to, you know, what do you think about this? Do we really need to be doing this? What do you think? And, and I think all too often, the board doesn't have a clear, solid voice. I think on this, on this ballot alone, I think more than half of the positions the selectman took were not unanimous. You know, one way or another, they were not unanimous, which, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, because you do want the difference of opinions, but it'd be nice to be able to strive for, you know, a singular message that the voters can believe. You know, the voters can say, "What do you think about this?", and then they look at the warrant articles and they say, "Well, half of these, they don't even, can't even agree on this." So I don't know what to think anymore. So I would, I think I have the, you know, the temperament to, to help, you know, kind of bring cooperation and conciliation and compromise to the board, and that's why I would like to ask for your vote on March eighth.
Fantastic. Chris?
I think Dave brings up a lot of good points, ah, Dave, Tim brings up a lot of great points as far as, I'm sorry, Tim, I'm sorry. There's too many days, too many days. But I feel that diversity is a great thing in a board. You get a lot of different perspectives out of it. I think that although it is great to have a board that has a unanimous decision on it, I understand what you're saying as far as to have that focal point, that, you know, okay, the whole board agrees. You know, I can honestly say, if anybody looks down the ballot, reads the voter's guide, you'll see odd man out. Most of the time, it's me. And I feel a lot of the things, I have no problem asking the questions. I don't have a problem asking the hard questions. I don't have a problem standing alone. If I have a belief that I, I feel like I, over the last three years, I've gone to, you know, many of the select board members and said, "Okay", you know, "I don't see it your way. Can you sell me on your way?" I feel like I'm open to the discussion, I'm open to the dialogue, but at the end of the day, I feel I'm going to stay with my belief, and what my belief typically is, what is best for the town of Milford and the residents. You know, I joke with people that to sit at this table on the board and actually sometimes vote against what your actual belief is, because your belief might not be in the best interest of the taxpayers. I can say that I've done votes like that, where I've said, "Okay, you know, I may not really want it that way, but it's better for the town to do it that way." So I guess, to me, you've got to be honest with yourself, you know, you, I feel, I'd like the board to, I guess I'm going to say it, I'd love the board to see things my way a lot more, Dave, but, you know, it really comes down to, I think that if we can put these, these situations out there, we can put the opinions out there, you know, that is the great part about voting. That is the great part about having, you know, the residents be part of the meetings. It is, you can put it out there, let them put input in, and, you know, let them sort of direct our town, you know, where we all think that it should go.
May I just make one small point? Unanimous, no, but make a decision. We need to make decisions. We can't be stagnant and just hope things happen. We got to make a decision, whether it's three to, three to two or four to one. We all have a voice. Yeah, it hurts to be voted against, because we're all, I bet you, we're all competitive, and we want to be right all the time, but we're not. We're not right all the time. We make that, we have to come, you know, to that realization. It is, what you said, and I agree with, you've got to do what's right for the town. So make a decision.
And were there any questions from the audience? I know I told the audience I would ask if there was any questions, comments, or, we're good? Okay. Great. Well, let me also make a quick plug. Next week, next Wednesday at six o'clock, if you enjoyed this board of selectmen discussion, next Wednesday is the school board, Milford School Board Candidate Night Forum, we'll call it, and that's going to be hosted by Steve Martin. So certainly, look forward to that. There are definitely open seats down here if you would like to attend that, but that will be at six o'clock. It'll be on Granite Town Media, who's also sponsoring this as well. I have said this over and over again, and I will continue to say this to you all, there's no question, as a person who's taught civics for twenty-five years, that communitarianism is the paramount feature of any community. You know, when DeTocqueville wrote Democracy in America, he thought the greatest strength that democracy had was the voluntary participation into groups, which is what made the country thrive. So my hat goes off to all three of you for throwing your, your hat into the ring to want to be part of the public service that we would, you know, put forward towards our board of selectmen. As many of you have already identified tonight, you know, and looking at the town voters of Milford, there are three fantastic candidates, but the most important thing you can do is to come out on March eighth, on Tuesday, and get your voice heard, from six o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night. There'll be a variety of ways that you can vote. We also have, you know, same-day registration, so if you're one of the few people in our town that aren't registered to vote, you bring down a, an ID and a piece of mail that, you know, shows your residence, and within five minutes, you can be an up-and-running, full-voting member of the Milford community. So please come out on Tuesday, March eighth, to the Milford High School, 100 West Street. I want to thank all three of you for taking time out tonight. I want to thank our audience members for being part of tonight's forum. Please take care and thank you for watching.
We have absentee voting also, don't we? Can you vote absentee?
Yes.
Yes.
So that is one more way just to-
And if for some reason you cannot get out, please absentee vote, but is there a deadline?
It might be too late for absentee.
Paul, would you know that? Is there a deadline?
Not really. You can actually go-
Oh, that's where you can actually deliver, you can deliver it now to the polls. Actually, I don't think you can. I think you can have someone deliver it for you.
Even better. So if you're struggling with that, please call the town clerk, talk to Joan Darji, and she will absolutely give you any extras on how to vote absentee, but most importantly, just be part of the community. Come down and vote. You're talking about, at the end of the day, over fifty-eight million dollars in taxes that our town has gone to, you know, accrue. So please have a voice in that. The best government is the government that's closest to you, that has the most effect on you. Thank you.